Hi.
Okay.
You better speak up, Sam.
I will try to speak up.
We're gonna be at the microphone maybe. The microphone's right there.
So it's just after six o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the South Kingstown Public Library Board of Trustees into order. Uh, first item of business is number one on our agenda, live streaming meetings. So we welcome anyone who happens to be watching this meeting and we hope that he will come back and learn more about the library and know what the Board of Trustees do to help support our wonderful library system. So if anyone have anything else to add about item one on the agenda? If not, I'll move to two, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes and are there any questions or changes suggested? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes? I so move?
Second.
Motion has been seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, um, item three correspondence.
Before you give me that.
And we can talk about four.
Okay.
Item three correspondence, are there any correspondence that you have?
Uh, no, none besides my general inbox.
Okay.
Nothing for the trustees.
Item four, public comment, there is no public here to comment.
Can I do a public comment for Elizabeth because she's not here?
Sure.
Okay. I go to the South, uh, the Kingston, what do they call it, Chamber Music Festival every year, from going on for like forty years.
Yes.
And they do little newsletters. Elizabeth wrote the most wonderful piece, I didn't bring it because I thought she'd be here talking, about how the music festival is gonna do more this summer with kids who are like at a music camp here at URI and in South Kingstown where now dancing. And Elizabeth talked about her paragraph, she went to that in the fifties or sixties
Ah.
and it helped forge her, she played in orchestras in college and high school and she's still in some, I'm gonna tell you, it's wonderful. I still have it, I'll save it to show you guys.
Excellent, thank you.
That's, that's my public comment for Elizabeth.
Okay.
Can you, uh, get it to me to include in the minutes?
I can't.
Can we get, include that in the minutes, a copy of whatever it is for article?
Okay, it's at home in my recycle bin.
Was it in the flyer?
Yeah, it's like a little, yeah, it just came, maybe you get it at home.
I did, I did get it, yeah.
Look on the back.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay.
I'll make a mention to look on the flyer then, okay.
Okay, Mario, yes.
So, uh, you know, I've missed the last several, uh, meetings, I wanna thank everybody for taking it up. I'm going to have to miss June too and also October and I've decided not to rerun for membership board. I'm just not doing the job I should be doing, so I can't keep on this. So I think I've been here ever since you started, well, it's about seven.
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, eight years, yes.
Same year as me, Mario, yep, two thousand seventeen.
Now, I feel bad about it, but I can't take somebody's place if not to hear, it just isn't right. So I just wanna let you all know that I'm not, I'm gonna decline rerun and that produces an opening, although, does anybody else have to run too?
I do, yeah.
So, what you?
I think June, we were the same.
July is your?
Oh, July, yeah, I was gonna say, I think we were at the same re-up time.
Right.
We were.
So I can't be here June, I guess we're skipping July, that means this is my last meeting.
Wow, Mario.
So I appreciate everybody and, and the guys are doing, I mean, it's, the library's an important deal and, and for the town.
Well, we still expect you to support it, come here, events, whatever, Mario.
Sure, of course.
So your term is up?
In July.
In July, so he'll get a letter from the town.
He got one.
Oh, you already tell them you were not looking to be re-approved?
I'm gonna submit that, I wanted to tell you guys first.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So I'll just give them that letter along.
And then they'll post it or however?
Yeah.
The town does it. I, there'll be people interested?
Yeah, they have a list of people.
Yeah, I think they have people already on file too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I think you also put them on the board, looking for, uh, on the outdoor.
We did when there were no, nobody on file, so I'll let the clerk tell me if there's somebody that I'll get.
I've seen, I've seen somebody on file, I was looking at the agenda, they listed names of people, I think there was one.
Yeah, I think, I did too, but they might've went to the bicycle pedestrian committee, so, you know, yeah, we'll advertise it if there's nobody forthright.
Well, thank you for your service, Mario, how many years has this been working so, seven?
Yeah.
Seven and a half. So I should be getting a letter because mine was also two thousand seventeen.
No, you, you. It was just Mario and Lindsay that I, cause I, they asked me attendance.
Oh, okay. You're sorry, certain people, you take over their stints, you know what I mean, sometimes you come in for people. Like I, cause we were the same.
And then Stan.
I, yeah.
So I would do wanna also say that I think Tim has done a great job as president. I think we all agree that he's really the right guy for that job.
Very nice of you to say, and we really appreciate your insights.
You're here, we all agree.
It's probably a good thing that I won't be here for life.
Oh.
Well, I took delivery of text, I gave a few treats for.
Oh, man. I, I tried for you.
If you wanna sign it.
I'll definitely sign and then pick you up.
Oh, man, treats.
Treats.
Well, maybe I should re-up and, uh, do it again?
So, do people have to, do you, you wanna go back on again, are they still doing the process of re-interviewing?
Yeah.
You have to go, okay, I wondered if anything had changed.
Start with you, I think, ask me your way.
And Tim, if I may, on the next agenda, we should have a new, um, election of the secretary.
Of course, you wanna do it now or is that not possible?
Oh, no, oh, no, Mario still has to come and take minutes, even if I'm running, well, he never.
Plus, there's a whole lot of politicking.
Yeah, right, right.
Clamoring for a job.
I won't tell you about pickleball at minute, unless you come take minutes.
Okay, uh, it's a dreadful meeting so far. Um, item five, president's report, I don't remember the reports, move right to item six, director's report, Laurel.
Okay, so that was in your packet, um, I will defer the, you know, the CLC update to number eight, but it's really just the general recording, um, we can say the, uh, to date received twenty sixteen hundred thousand dollars and ten cents. Um, and we are this close to having the final plans for the design drawings for their construction. Uh, boilers were finally replaced at Peacedale, we didn't have to shut down, so that was good, uh, they're real pretty and shiny. The Potter Grant was awarded, it, uh, as I think was mentioned in a couple of meetings ago, it was not as much as was requested. Potter Grant, Mary, that's the Kingston Grant.
Yeah. How much?
It, the award was twenty one hundred dollars. So that will support programming and, uh, materials at Kingston.
Do you know how the number is determined, how, how it's, uh, is there a committee that decides how to discharge the money?
There is, and I don't know if you remember Elizabeth talking about it, she's on the committee, so they get, um, several requests, I think she said there was, I don't wanna quote, but there was quite a few requests, so I think they, they, um, just kinda look at what the ask is and what's doable and what, it, the specific goal of that grant is to help Kingston, Kingston Village, so I guess the more that that happens, the more likely you'll get your full request, but, uh, that's what I know about that.
And is that your mark for anything or just?
Uh, programming, uh, so adult and children's programming and any, maybe supplies that might go along with that. And then, uh, I point, I'd like to point out outreach has been very good and continue to grow as we go into a nicer months. We'll be doing, uh, some beach outreach, going to the beach, on Town Beach, they have like special nights here where they have a concert and that kind of thing. Water fire maybe, um.
They have the concerts in front of the guild?
Well, I'm gonna help out again, we did, we did water fire last, was it last year or two years ago?
Two years ago.
Where we had a table.
Right.
Hot as hell, but we, it's, it's very hot, so.
But that's ramping up and then, um.
But those are good, yeah.
Can you, um, send out dates so that if we?
Yeah, absolutely.
About or just stop by?
Mm-hmm. And that's it for that. Any questions? I'll be answered.
Uh, I had one question about boilers, you didn't have to shut down to do it?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. They, it, it took them a while to get it all up and, and ready and I think they actually fired it a couple of weeks, or maybe a week ago, so was it that?
And there's no asbestos on there? Have you all ones out?
Yeah.
Don't say that word out loud.
Excuse me. Okay, uh, item seven, statistics.
So, also in your packet and what I supplied was just start of general circulation. Figures we are down from March by five hundred ninety-seven transactions. No, I'm sorry. We are up from last year, five hundred ninety-seven transactions, so we're doing better than we did last year at this time. Quite a small margin.
Is that library wide, how are we doing?
That's all three locations.
How are we doing the age?
So it, it's, I did look that up this time, uh, Peacedale has circulated ten thousand one hundred and twenty-two items. Kingston Free has circulated three thousand four hundred and twenty-four items and Hale has circulated one thousand and eighty-one items. That's how it normally goes.
Well, I, I guess my question is compared to last year, are all three up, two up, one down, is your answer?
Oh, no, that's in front of me, I, I could do it, get it, but I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I'm happy to see in your pie chart here, so the orange, whatever that color is juvenile, and then yellow is red, is, oh, well over fifty percent of the checkouts, granted, when I see the mothers taking out twenty books at a time, I know they take out time, but that's good, I'm glad to see that.
And it's good. Sixty-four, for the year, sixty-four thousand four hundred and ten juvenile.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of competition to libraries with streaming stuff and, you know, just free stuff they can get off the internet and whatever.
But for juveniles, you know, a lot of parents don't want their child, you know, screaming.
I know. Children, they're up to ten and over, they're probably saying, fine, watch it, I don't want that, anyway, I'll put it in. Yes.
Okay, um, let's move on to item eight, the Community Learning Center CLC Grant Update.
Okay, so aside from the reporting that we've been doing and we have been drawing down funds to pay the owner's project manager and the A and E, uh, team, we are looking to do a community focus group, so we're gonna have three different focus groups in each of the areas. So that was health, workforce, and education. Those are going to take place, um, we're trying to get them all on the same day, but we're having a trouble, we only had two people that were interested in, in the health one, so if you know anybody that might be in that field or have an active interest in that subject matter.
Only the three rooms again, health, workforce.
Health, work, workforce development support, and education support. So the two dates that are, are looking good right now are Wednesday, May twenty-eighth and Monday, June seventh. Um, it would be like a one-hour thing. When I mentioned this before, Karen and I, now Karen is the Community Learning Center Coordinator, um, and she, uh, was hoping that, to have some help from the trustees to help kinda direct the, the conversation because we've been in it so long, I think we might be a little biased, so if they already have some things where, where you could have a, a nice fresh, fresh face, fresh voice. So, once we get the dates solidified, um, we'll send out an email and then anybody that wants to come help us out, that would be great. You know, Karen will prepare the questions, but it would be great to have.
I definitely would like to be, even though I'm leaving, I definitely.
Yeah, I'll have, have it as well.
Okay.
So where would this, um, are all three topics gonna be discussed at each, um, forum or is it one?
No, well, we kicked around that idea because we didn't, we had like, um, maybe ten people interested all together and it didn't, it didn't seem like that was a lot, so we were just gonna mash them all together, but I thought when it was advertised, since we advertised it to be that, you, you know, you're a leader in this field or you're somebody in this field, please come up, give us your input. I don't wanna throw in something that they didn't even agree to and, and jack it up another hour, you know, so to keep it brief, to keep it to what they agree to, we're gonna have different, the different subjects.
Might I suggest, might I suggest I come to the library and I often see, uh, tutors with the kids.
Yep.
Have you, and I'm sure you know who's, who they are.
Yep.
Have you reached to them directly, if they need an application?
I, I mentioned that to Karen, I don't know, we have four, so when we were shooting for five at most, I think, I think we're doing pretty good, so it wouldn't surprise me if she did. You know, cause I did mention it, like, well, we have that right there, um, but good suggestion.
Well, I told you, I am interested, um, just 'cause I wanna feel plugged into this more. Um, are they talking evening, late afternoon?
So it would be, uh.
Mornings?
Nine thirty to ten thirty, ten thirty to eleven thirty, that type, that sort.
Yep, just curious.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it would be hard to have more than one topic in a session.
I do, I think, you know, I mean, if I could possibly, because I'm an educator. Right.
How much, I mean, they can offer about health because.
Yeah.
They're dealing with a population that.
Mental health.
Right, so I, I, maybe it does work better.
Well, I think too, I suggested that, say, the education one is the first thing, you could always ask those people, hey, we're doing another one right after this, do you wanna stay and this is the topic, you know, maybe they'll jump on board.
How did you get the word out about?
So there was a list of stakeholders that Karen had created a email asking, you know, explaining our mission, what we're doing, the project and, and what we're trying to accomplish, sent it out and, and it got some good response, I tell you, there was one other one that was, you know, as I was saying.
All the other people.
Yep.
The people who said, maybe they don't live in South Kingstown or work in South Kingstown, that's great.
Can you forward that information to us, could I have somebody suggest for help?
Awesome, yes, absolutely.
Did we have a fellow who did a seminar here on Medicare and what the options?
Um, we have, yep.
Yeah, I don't know if you've talked to them about this, but he may be, or I am, but that may be something.
And how is Karen coming up with the questions, are there other, I mean, is she creating them from just dealing with these?
I imagine those or from? Yeah, I mean, there's.
Other focus groups that have been done in these areas, I don't know.
I'm sure, she's very thorough, so I'm sure.
She's doing her best.
And there's only so many ways to ask, well, what do you think we should do?
But that's too vague.
What kind of program?
That's too vague.
And, and maybe there's follow, she's, she's great at that kind of stuff, you know, follow-up questions, once they answer, well, you know.
I mean, education is, is in elementary, middle school, high school, post-graduate, I mean, that's very broad.
Yes.
And the session could be here?
Correct, yep.
Okay, were any other questions or comments about, um, the focus groups? Let's move on to item nine, policy review.
Okay, so, um, what you have in your packet are the updated docs. Um, I'll refresh your memory with the rules of conduct, uh, anything in yellow is something that has been changed or added. Mike, you had asked me, oh, that's more for the, uh, but, um, just to throw it in there, uh, well, I'll, I'll wait till we get down to the youth services. So one of the things I'd like to point out is, um, instead of, it used to be called the youth services, um, policy, now it's seek child policy and that matches the state's language on, you know, what they believe some of our policies, our required policies should be.
Uh-huh.
Um, then we changed the age from, I think it was eight, I don't know why, to ten. Um, we added vaping and chewing tobacco into, you know, the smoking prohibited, um, skipping down, we added being under the influence of alcohol, legal drugs prohibited, added, um, the American Disabilities Act to the statement about service animals. Changed the mobile phones to serve in the areas because before we had said, no, you can't do it, but then we were directing people to those areas, so, you know, we didn't necessarily send them outside in the rain or the cold, so we just, um, had added that, you know, please keep your phone outside, or it should be set to silent mode. Um, the statement about sexual harassment, it comes directly from language that the town uses in their ordinance. Um, and then any, the, I just made it consistent where we're saying on library premises, which encompasses the building and the ground, so that is consistent throughout, and then finally, unintended bags or personal items are not allowed. So that's, I believe all the changes that you had recommended and that we discussed.
So on the, oh, they're not numbered, so the one with smoking, so I could vape within fifty feet of the library?
This is vaping.
Well, it's smoking, vaping, tobacco chewing are prohibited in the library, but then smoking is prohibited within fifty feet. So I could vape standing outside, I don't know, people seem to be mentioning it.
Yeah.
Fine.
That's a good question, yes.
It's not a problem.
I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, I don't.
No, I mean, what person, place, you know, it's not illegal, illegal.
So we can encourage more young people to use the letters?
Yeah.
Keep the vape, that's how they're acting more.
Yeah. Any other questions or?
Well, you bring up a good point, you think they should be numbered?
Oh, well, I went to look for the number and then there were no numbers, I don't know, are we usually, are things numbered again? Other rules or things that are?
Yes. The media and the policies numbered?
I think it wouldn't hurt to know, because if someone had a question, you know, call and stuff.
Yeah, they don't say.
I mean, six.
Oh, it's the third one for the boss.
Yeah, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, for you too. We wanna make things easy for you, Laurel.
I like to hear that.
Unintended bag, that's an interesting one, because.
Well, we had that happen the other day, a gentleman just kinda spread out all over on a table and just left, like went to smoke a cigarette.
Right.
We're going and, and then come back for a while, his phone's dinging away and, you know, just, so, and we had nothing to point to saying, you can't do this.
So now you can at least connect time telephone.
And it does happen in the, you know, in the transient population.
Right. Or in us older people who forget and then I go over and start chatting or looking at a book and I leave a bunch of things.
Do you need a motion to address?
Yes.
I so move. So motion has been made?
A second.
A second, motion has been made and seconded to approve the changes, uh, that were just discussed to the South Kingstown Public Library Rules of Conduct for library users. And this is available on, on the website for anybody that wants to check out our policies and all sorts of things. Uh, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all of us.
Yeah, well, thanks for the great input. Okay, so the youth services policy, what I was starting to say before is that Mike had brought up, um, a very good point of, you know, having the solicitor's office look it over and they did.
Yeah.
And their response was, um, I see no legal issues with this policy, in case it is helpful, I am linked below the policy from Darrenton. They represent that town, um. That has some potential language that consider adding, I looked at it, I didn't see much different to add in, a different format that I didn't really care for. Um, so you'll see that they also included disclaimer that the, their library does not act in loco printis, which is what we were talking about the last meeting, which means more or less the same language that you highlighted from my review, let me know if you need anything for that. So she, um, the solicitor's office very helpful and everything seemed good to go for what I was reading now. The biggest changes, um, are highlighted again, where the age change and then, um, that sentence where unintended, I think somebody had suggested that as well. Unintended children may use the library phones upon contact, their guardian and arrange transportation. I guess the staff may also call on any child we have, I wrote that very fast.
So if you're fifteen or fourteen, I guess it says under fourteen, so if you're fourteen and you're here by yourself and you close the doors, they're gonna leave, nobody's gonna wait around.
You know, a staff will wait for a little bit, two steps.
You're over fourteen or older.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question. If they're fourteen and older.
Yes.
We go to close. They're sitting, let's say on the picnic table. The public.
So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yes, yes.
If you're older than fourteen, we're closing, you're on your own.
And you're.
And why did you select fourteen, just, is that?
It was sixteen, which seemed kinda high on it and we had discussed it and I, everybody was in agreement, um.
I don't know, I think in the wintertime, a fourteen-year-old or fifteen-year-old, it's six o'clock, the library closes, their parents haven't come yet, it's pitch dark out, you're like, adios kid, you're on your own.
I don't think staff would, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think some judgment comes that seems to be used here.
You do have a statement, unattended, unattended children may use the library phones to contact their guardian, make sure.
Right.
So if you have a sixteen-year-old who says, you know, I, I can't get home, you're not gonna say, oh, no, let me stay here, you know, proof of baby, you're gonna say, of course.
Why? Use the phone, maybe they don't have a cell phone or whatever.
I just wonder if there's a, a legal standard that we should follow.
You wonder why, I can't, you can't.
I just wonder if there's a legal standard that we should follow, you know, why didn't we pick fourteen, is there, is this something that you should ask the town about?
I mean, can, they checked this one before.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was higher. I can, um.
Yeah, Mario, I had a problem with this too, even the one above, young people aged ten and older may visit the library independently. So a ten-and-a-half-year-old can be dropped off to hang out at the library and I know it happens.
I, that's okay.
My mother wouldn't have done that, but that's okay.
My mom did, my mom did.
Well, it's, that's the mom, so I think, I, I mean.
The thirty-year-old's kid.
Ten and over can stay home by themselves.
Exactly, stay home.
So I think that's kinda state law, that's probably a standard, I mean, I would say.
And that's what I'm, what's the standard?
Well, staying home alone is a different sort of.
Yeah, why do so eleven-year-olds can babysit?
I mean, no, I mean, can they take guys?
I know, okay, I am going, so, fine, you guys, it's mine.
They're this close to driving.
Oh, please. It's true. Not an eleven-year-old.
No, a fourteen-year-old.
Oh, oh, okay. No, I'm back in the upper paragraph.
Oh.
The one, two, the third paragraph.
Well, you said it was eight previously.
I've seen, it was listed as eight previously.
It was eight previously.
That's too young.
I think ten is very reasonable, and again, it's state law, it is different than being home, but I mean, the library is like supposed to be a safe place. Maybe it's safer than where they live, you know, so.
No, I know, and I realize there's there's sort of openings here, you know, the staff, to be honest, we call the police, they can, you know, they have resources they can do. There's always, I was concerned once, you or Pam, there's always someone on staff to me who's an adult. Not that all of your staff are so young.
At least one person.
Maybe it can happen.
No, Mario, you're dedicated.
No, they can stop during fights. By some of the kids I see here, report part-time, and young.
But there's always a lead staff, and that's just not the image.
Okay, just staff, okay, power, that's good, right.
Whoever has the moment.
No, they can ask, it might, you know.
I I I personally trust
I'm a little concerned about the kids hanging out there.
I trust the discretion of the staff, you know, to do the right thing and, you know, not just leave somebody out in the cold in the dark and sunny night.
But I I I'd like to make the suggestion that you check that fourteen with the town.
Can hear you, Mario.
Yeah.
This hasn't been checked though, right?
Didn't you say?
No, I don't
It was before it was sixteen.
Sixteen. So you changed it to fourteen, I really think we should check with the town to see if that age is is appropriate, that they agree.
But I think, reading that whole sentence, it's not that we're just gonna leave them, then the police will be called.
If you're fort, under fourteen, if you're over fourteen, you can just leave them after this. And I, that makes me a little nervous, to be honest with you, and
They do have rules like at the rec center, Mario, you read the signage, and I'm sure it should apply to this, you can't just leave a bunch of twelve-year-olds at the rec center to run wild, you know, in the basketball and the gym and all that. They have to be adults, but don't you check?
Please, I think, yes, just so we're, just so we're
I mean, I looked at almost all the other libraries in the state's policy.
Okay.
And we're all wrong.
They use the same ages.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, if you've done that, I'm okay with it, yeah, as long as it's not
Great.
Yeah.
And we're a little lower, so, you know, it's right in that range. But that was, I was comfortable with that.
The library director is comfortable in so much.
Right.
Well, that's, that being, that being said.
Well, that happens as those are in school years, so.
All right, I move that we accept the safe child policy.
They grow up quite a bit.
Mario moves, is there a second?
My second.
So the motion is approved and seconded to adopt the changes that we discussed to the library's safe child policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, changes are approved.
Thank you, Laura.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for being working at other libraries, I know that's
Yep, thank you for your helpful conversation.
Moving on to item ten, the Institute of Museum and Library Services Funding, this is a federal agency.
Yes, so good news on that front. Um we are going to get our summer grant this year, which, um if you remember, was roughly a thousand dollars um to support the the programming and, well, programming. Um as far as on the more national level for the institute itself, um there's been an injunction filed. Um that was done by A.G. Nirona, and that has been upheld right now. There is also a temporary restraining order um done on, uh done by the American Library Association, and they're looking to do a separate lawsuit to prevent them from dismantling that agency. Um these are temporary actions, but they did get approved by a judge, and we'll see, I think. I wanna say the first one was seven days, but I haven't heard anything. They did, uh separate from this, but I guess I can just mention that they did fire, they uh
Oh, yeah, they fired law.
No, the head of the library in Congress.
Yes.
And appointed, um
Somebody from the Justice Department, I read it.
Yes, exactly.
A legal person, a lawyer. But then two staff members wouldn't let him in, you gotta read the whole article. It was a little kerfluffle at the library environment.
Quite tough, don't you think?
Very unfigurified, but it sounded great.
So for now, status quo?
Yes.
Into library home funding?
Yeah, everything is, everything is good.
So If this is all canceled, zero now, which I'm sure comes, is now, you know, and it probably happens next year, what is the impact on this library?
So on this library, it would be made, well, first of all, it's up to OLS to decide how they wanna proceed. That's the state agency that gets forty percent of its funding from from the, this resource's source. Um they would have to first make a call on what, how they wanna run their budget.
So if OLS lost forty percent.
Yeah.
And that meant that whatever funding we get from them would be similarly reduced. Let's just take that as a big
We would, the only thing we get from them is grant money. Well, let me take that back. That's the only funding we get, but we get services from them, so we get databases, we get the delivery that goes between
Between the
Between branches.
Okay.
Um throughout the state. Um That's the thing, I'm sure. Uh that that that's the biggest effect that I think.
So the two biggest effects if this goes through might be that we lose OLS databases?
Right, so they ask RI um that they pay for for the whole state, which has a whole bunch of different databases within a platform.
And then the distribution of books, like when North Kingstown wants a book from South Kingstown, they don't operate.
That would, could be cut back, yeah.
So instead of that every day, it might be once every two weeks or something.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's
That's huge. That being said, I mean, it's, that's not the only way to get that done, and we can pay for that. You know, have to find a funding.
Don't tell them, they'll say, you pay for it, they'll tell you, you pay for it.
Well, no, I don't think so.
You're on the camera, Laura.
But it would be
But it would, it would just one library at a time.
I understand.
And it would be a diminished service probably, I mean
Yeah. Yeah. With longer weeks. Right, it's like, we're, it's saying we could afford to pay for it, but where Providence can't, then, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not, it wouldn't be equitable. Relationships with all the other random libraries won't affect your relationships or like your communication in a way, or? Um, I, they don't pay for any of that. So it's, I think it's more the the delivery, the resources and the the funding for like the pro, like they pay for a digitization grant, so any programs like that, um through through the IMLS, through the state to us, um you know, those would be gone. If, if they made that choice.
I'm kinda looking for I'm kinda looking for, I don't know, is it five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars?
This year's summer reading grant was a thousand. It's really never been paid on hard end.
So the maximum would be ten thousand dollars worth of effect. I I know you're guessing, I'm just trying to get, just trying to get a feel.
If 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 we had to pay for our own delivery, it'd be more than that.
And databases and all of that.
It would be more, like, well, more than ten thousand.
Okay, I'm
Yeah, and but like, we would never be able to match the breadth of what they do in the databases. Like, we may pick up, um like, just for example, they have like the mechanic one, whatever that is, I can't think of it right now. We could pick up that, but there's no way we could pick up every single one they offer, you know?
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get a feel for the worst case.
I I I would more worry about like OLS, you know, than us. They're the ones under the gun, and they're the ones that, they'll have to make the decision, so say forty percent of their funding goes away, they'll have to make the decision, well, are we gonna weigh off people, are we gonna still provide services to libraries, or that's that's the hard thing on that.
I understand.
And there's some libraries that Maine completely shut down, their funding did get taken away. So they're arbitrary where heads are
Not because of that, I don't think, the governor, or was she the governor, she is the governor of Maine who spoke back to Mr. Trump.
Yeah.
And so he cut a lot of tickets in Maine.
Just as a side, I'm speaking about all those services, uh if you're not familiar with askri.org, um you should check it out, because one of the features is called Flipster, which allows you to read dozens and dozens of magazines, different magazines for free, New Yorker, The Atlantic.
What's it, what is it called?
I I don't
You just go to askri.org.
Right.
And then
Flipster.
That's that one, yeah.
There's a video.
Yeah. I haven't looked at it recently, but I have it before, you're right, it's amazing, and who's paying for that?
That's OLS.
That's OLS.
Through the IMLS.
Those are magazine subscriptions, somebody has to pay for them.
Yeah, and they're not cheap.
Right.
And, but it wouldn't affect our state aid, um that comes with, you know, from the state, that kind of thing. It's tricky.
Um one thing I'd like to mention, since Elizabeth is not here, um the next segment is the Kingston Fair and there's also the used book sale.
That's a week from this Saturday.
From this Saturday.
Okay, before Memorial Day, all right.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's the Saturday.
It's Saturday.
The seventeenth.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry.
It's the Saturday.
It's not the, like, the fifteenth, like
No, the fifteenth is Thursday, Saturday is the seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause it's the Saturday, I'm working, I'm working that day.
It's the Saturday. Okay.
Not there, I'm working
So this Saturday, Kingston, Kingston Fair, the books, the book sale.
Right, the seventeenth.
Nine to
It could, nine to two.
One to two, nine to two.
Yeah, get there early if you want, to get good selection, so, get some good books there. Okay, unless there's anything else, uh anyone on the phone, uh entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Which time is the next meeting?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, let's get right over it, I don't know, next meeting, June tenth.
That's okay. Cause I will not be here.
Mm-hmm.
I know that Mario will be, I'm not sure if anybody else is, could be, I'm just wanted, sure we had, kept that conversation.
Peace to everybody.
At at this point, is there anyone else that will not be able to make that meeting?
I think I should be good.
Anyone else that wants to, I'm sorry.
No, next, you'll be here next month, right?
Oh, yeah. And we're not gonna do July, or we haven't gotten that far yet?
We usually don't.
I know last year we didn't, I know we didn't, but then
Yeah, I think we decided a meeting or two ago not to do July.
It was tomorrow. Okay, so for as of now, not July.
Right.
But we will do August.
And then, August, is it in Kingston? Is that it, or I don't remember?
Um, do you wanna put that? Put it on the next agenda, okay.
Yeah, talk about it, that's right, next month.
Maybe it was in the schedule for the year?
Yeah, 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 although
But June is here.
Is that Eastdale? Yeah, correct.
Okay, well, if there's anything else, uh on the agenda, is there anything else to discuss? Again, is there a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Yeah.
Second.
Moving second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned.
Six, uh six forty-five, two.